So I've sent a lot of emails to Mayor Tim and to Mike McCarthy about my concerns about the increasing noise levels. I stood up here, I think it was two years ago, with the same sort of concern, and it seems quaint now how quiet it was back then compared to how it is now. It seems like the cars are getting newer and fancier and just louder than I ever imagined they could be. And it's, there's a big difference between someone who's down on their luck and can't keep their car tuned up properly and needs to get to work, and the difference between that and someone with a brand-new BMW that, you know, paid more than any car I've ever owned to have this super obnoxious rattling, rasping thing that goes by and, you know, shakes my windows. And apart from just my neighborhood, I mean, I don't even like to go eat at Twiggs anymore. I don't even like to be anywhere near Main Street. And anytime, it's not just St. Albans, anytime I've talked to any law enforcement person or anyone, they say, oh, there's nothing we can do about it. There's, you know, it's, it's, it's an inspection issue or, you know. And St. Albans has laws on the books that are pretty specific about noise, and they're, they're pretty good ones. And, you know, they basically say, don't make excessive noise. If you do, that's a problem. They also say it's not okay to have an exhaust that was modified to be louder than the manufacturer had it. So, I don't know, I'd like to see something happen. I don't think that having a community discussion is going to do anything. I'd like to see some enforcement about, you know, if our noise ordinances and/or hear from the city about what, you know, what suggestions there are besides moving or putting in earplugs, which is not going to work. So, yeah, that's all.
What do you have for suggestions? Do you have any?
Yeah, have a cop sit on Main Street and start writing tickets when people roll.
Standing there with a car or?
However, however, police do police.
But how do we enforce the noise ordinance? There's a certain number of decibels that it has to be, so.
Excessive noise is excessive noise. If it was disorderly conduct, they're not talking about decibels. If people are bothered by it or if it's...
Would you consider your basic motorcycle driver down the street excessive noise?
I'd consider the average motorcycle, the average motorcycle in St. Albans, I would consider excessive, yes. I don't know about, you know.
So Josh, just so you know, I shared your email with the, with the council.
Yeah.
You know, I told them I had invited you as well. We've, we've all discussed it in some form or fashion, not just recently, but in the past as well.
Yeah.
Dom, what was the, you were going to do some homework? Is that how we sort of led that?
That's really the problem, Josh, is I didn't get my homework done.
No, it's okay.
You know, we can, let me visit with the chief. Maybe we can take a run at it, you know, the, the climate in the country right now, law enforcement's cowed, right? And they're reluctant to exercise their police powers.
Right.
And even more reluctant to do so, the more subjective something is, the tougher it is to get them to do it right now, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, the, the officer discretion, you know it when you hear it standard, they're a little gun shy. And everything we've told our officers is put your guns away, go build relationships, right?
Right.
And this is swimming in the opposite direction, right? And I'm not, I'm not saying we can't, you know, we've heard enough about it. I think it's not going away, you know, and, and so let me take some time to look at what exists on the books and bring it back, and we can have a council discussion about it. But if we're going to do it, I want it to be a council directive, right? I don't want it to be a... You can imagine how this can go sideways, right? Depending on who it is that gets arrested and how the officers are determined that, right? I mean, this, this has all kinds of hair on it, right?
Yeah. I just feel, I know from my previous experience with the criminal justice system, it seems like, in general, a police officer doesn't usually manage to find a good reason to pull somebody over, whether or not it's a real reason or not. So here we have a real reason.
Yeah.
And...
I just wanted to finish my thought with Josh.
Sorry, no doubt.
No, it's okay. I wasn't trying to justify
Oh, I know.
noise, but I, I don't know, I agree, Josh, and believe me, there's not many more noise than people driving up that little, that one-way street, both motorcycles, cars, big trucks, especially with Cayman now, out of commission, a lot of big trucks. So I know what noise is, and I agree with you that we need to do something about the noise. But what I, what we need to find out is what we can do about it and what kind of regulations exist that we can enforce equally and not just pick up anybody that seems that in an officer's subjective opinion sounds loud, you know what I'm saying? That's right, that's right now.
Yeah.
Police officers aren't necessarily intrinsically drawn to quality-of-life complaints. It's not where they like to be, right?
Right.
It's not how they're built, it's not, you know. So let me, maybe there's a different way for us to get at it, and I just...
Dom, I was thinking not necessarily arrest is as much as a ticket or the
Oh, yeah.
courtesy arresting somebody or issuing a ticket.
Yeah, that's all, you know, but let me take a look at it and see if there's a creative way to, to, to get at after. It doesn't, doesn't seem to be going away.
The other thing we talked about, Josh, is manufacturers aren't helping us any because they're, they're promoting that loud muffler.
Well, you've got yipes, yeah.
Well, not, not just the yipes, but even the newer cars, right? I mean, Chad, I looked at my, my motor guy.
So a lot of new cars come with a quote-unquote "sport" button, so it just, it makes the exhaust louder, so it bypasses the muffler. So your new Corvettes, your new Jags, the new Mustang, they all have that, that button on them. And that's, that's stock from the factory.
Yeah.
I know, I, I'd shared with them, I'd heard on the radio, I didn't pursue it, but New York State is looking at legislation relative to that, to the same issue, whether, I'll be curious to see what they, if anything, they do, but...
So we go down this road, my only, my only thing is, I want to say is, issuing tickets is probably not going to be the best thing because now you have someone that's going to, that needs to pay a ticket on top of, oh, I need to get my exhaust fixed, and so it's like a double whammy.
That's good. Give them a choice.
I want to make sure that if the, if the object is too quiet and we have any recourse to do that, that that's the goal, not ticket people.
Are there any counselors who are pro-noise?
I'd like to add something to that, Josh, not only the engine noise and the exhaust noise, but also, and you've heard it of short, the blaring radios
Yeah.
on the cars that are, that would wake up the dead. I mean, that needs to be addressed.
The windows vibrate.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Anything else, Josh?
Uh, no, thank you for listening. Hopefully we'll keep talking about it.
Yep. No, I encourage you to...
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Chad, you're real close to losing your sign over there.
That's okay. Just my sign.
Mr. Scheffler, were you up? How are you, Zach?
How are you guys?
Good. Thanks for, thanks for joining us tonight.
It's, it's good to be here. I, I, I wanted to chat with something that I was made aware of in the, I think it was the last week or so. And like many of you, I was a little disappointed that there's more, there's more hate, more hate coming up to St. Albans, right? And while I was disappointed and a little sad, some folks got together and they're looking to provide a counterpoint, something that promotes inclusion and belonging and equity. And that's this Friday, it's July 16th, it's at 6:00 PM, it's in the park. I'd encourage you all to come and, and if you can, help out. We need food and tables and drinks. There's going to be the Vermont Freedom and Unity Forum there. It'll be a good time, family-friendly, you know, talking games and face painting and everything like that, everything that I think a community wants to see in its, in its town. It's over in Taylor Park, it's at the gazebo there. So those, that is, what I wanted to come here and say to you all is to ask you to be like some kind person, an anonymous donor. They gave us, I don't know, 50, 100 bucks to cover the gazebo rental, and that was a big help. It's a small thing in some ways, but it's a big thing in others. So if you have any ability to bring tables and chairs, even bring yourselves to have a good time and to join the community in something that includes everybody and is trying to tell those in our community who, you know, maybe feel on the outside that we're all here in it together, and that, not only that, but we're really committed as a, as a city and as a community to, to equity and, and belonging and encouraging that, and being good neighbors and all that stuff. So in any way you can help, on Friday, the 16th, at 6 to 9.
So what you meant calling it?
It's called, it's called the Community Rally for Togetherness, and that's what it's all about, is being together in, in peace and good spirits and, and there for each other, you know. I think that's important, especially important to remember, as you mentioned, in tough times and troubled times like this. So that's my, that's my personal call to action. It's been, you know, it's been quite a week, but it would really mean a lot to, to have your help. Anything the city can do as far as spreading awareness of the event on their websites, or even your personal Facebook pages, or others, if you search for neighbors for safer St. Albans, you'll find it. And I posted it on Front Porch Forum today. You can find all the links you need. So it would mean a lot, just to me personally and to others more than you could know. So all of you, that's, that's all I ask, and I really do thank you for your time and attention and listening. It, it means a lot. That means a lot, too.
Thanks, Zach.
Can you send me what you want me to bring?
Absolutely.
Do you want water, whatever, just let me know, like, can you get Gatorade?
Dude, Gatorade, heck yeah. If there's anybody else, I'd be happy to send you resources and a list of things that, that we need. I have, I have all y'all's email contacts.
Just send me, just send me the list and I'll see what I can get.
Right on.
Okay, thank you.
Zach, will you have loud music? I'm just, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Depends on how boisterous the chorus gets. They're a pretty, they're a pretty happy bunch, and they're really excited to be here. I can't tell you how much it means to the folks coming here. They're going to be folks speaking about, about what the day means and how important it is, the reality of the situation and, and the happiness that a lot of us feel. So, yeah, I, I think they're going to be pretty pumped.
So Zach, just, just a thank you for organizing. We, we sort of had that discussion last meeting, and that it's a community that's going to organize events like this, and thank you for your, for your efforts and your time.
Yeah. Thanks for listening again.
Maybe we can fire some of that loud music up to the old jazz building above the courthouse.
No comments.
I don't like that.
Thank you.
I don't like chainsaws either, so no reason to annoy this section. You don't tease him, Josh, you don't tease him.
Thank you, Zach. Anyone else have public comment for tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mayor's Report, which is, we are going to consider Lauren Dees Erickson as candidate for the Planning Commission. I don't, Lauren, you must, I want you to consider yourself special because usually the Mayor's Report is at the end of the meeting, and for some reason, some reason you got moved to the top of the agenda so you don't have to stick around if you don't choose to, so.
Very rarely do the candidates actually come in.
Yeah, really, yeah.
So very rarely.
So am I turning it over to Mr.?
Turn it over to me, I think, because I had the privilege, along with Marie and Chad, of interviewing Lauren via Zoom not so very long ago for that position. And we enjoyed meeting with you, Lauren, and we found you to be extremely qualified through experience around the world, and we're very glad that you relocated to St. Albans. And I think the folks that I met with are in agreement with me that you make a good candidate, a good actual person on the Planning Commission. So I would recommend that the council appoint you to that alternate position, which is a position which would expire, I think, in 12/31 of '24. So I would make that recommendation.
Can I come up here and see her?
Right.
I can't see her. Oh, hi. Good to see you. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'll second.
So we have a motion, a second, to nominate Lauren to the Planning Commission as an alternate, right? Is that correct, Chip?
For now.
For now, yeah. Any other questions of Lauren or the process?
No, I thought Lauren was a fantastic candidate, lots of great background. She's going to make a fantastic planning.
I was impressed with the, with the application, absolutely.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Lauren, you're on the Planning Commission for three years.
Welcome, Lauren.
Thank you.
Welcome to this lady.
Thank you for applying.
You're going to get her in the loop for the next, the next meeting, you need to then...
Perfect. Thank you. So moving on to item number five, consider approval of extra territorial water and wastewater allocation for Purpose Energy. So Dom, we'll turn it over to you.
I would welcome Mr. Eric Fitch to take the table and just introduce the project a little bit. Take five minutes or so and give them an overview of the site and what you're thinking of doing out there.
So actually, before you start, Eric, I am going to recuse myself and step down. I'll turn it over to Chad. I will move to the audience. Eric and I have been in communication for my real job for SCIDC in, in this project going into the industrial park. So we've been in long conversations, so I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion. Chad, I'll call you.
So Eric, if you just want to give us a basic overview of the project?
I'd love to. My name is Eric Fitch. I represent Purpose Energy. Purpose Energy is an industrial waste byproduct remediation company. We look for opportunities in mostly food and beverage manufacturing, things like breweries, distilleries, ice cream makers, where there's a waste byproduct that's really high in organic load. And organic load, that's what a municipal wastewater treatment plant treats for the first defense. There's other things like nutrients, like phosphorus, that are also part of a municipal wastewater treatment plant's operation. But the first thing that it treats is organic load. This is, if you hear the wastewater guys talk about BOD or COD, that's, that's what we look for. A municipal plant's usually aerobic, meaning you put a bunch of oxygen into the system. The bacteria that are in the sludge, they consume that, that oxygen demand, the BOD, and, you know, therefore remediate it. When you have really high concentrations of BOD, it takes a lot of oxygen, and the aerobic systems just aren't efficient at that. There's two real problems. One is the cost of getting all that oxygen diffused into the wastewater system, and the other is the amount of sludge that an aerobic system generates. An aerobic system will produce about a kilogram of sludge for every kilogram of oxygen demand that you remove. And when you hear about the wastewater treatment plants dewatering and taking all of their, their solids someplace, that's the, the aerobic sludge. We do our system anaerobically. It looks a lot like a cowpower digester or a farm digester. It's just tailored for an industrial setting. We take the industrial waste, we treat it anaerobically. Because it's anaerobic, we don't have to inject oxygen. So from an operating cost perspective, it's more efficient. Also, the yield, instead of a kilogram per kilogram of sludge per organic load, it's only about 5%. So we generate a lot less sludge as well. So one of the opportunities that we've identified is here in the St. Albans Industrial Park. We'd like to locate a facility adjacent to the Ben &amp; Jerry's plant, just to the south side of Ben &amp; Jerry's. Share a property line. There's a lot of material that gets trucked off-site right now. Mostly it's pushing product through pipes and vessels in between runs. A lot of that gets trucked to one of our facilities in South Burlington, Vermont, and I would say that it's trucked to different farms and digesters all around the state because of its volume. We'd like to put in a system next door to it, and we can pump that, that waste to our system, completely eliminate those trucks. And the, the amount of electricity that we can produce is a little over a kilowatt. We've got a 20-year power purchase agreement from the state of Vermont through the standard offer program, where they'll buy that power from us. So the project will take waste that's currently trucked off-site, they'll process it anaerobically next door, they'll produce electricity that we pump to the grid. And then the treated wastewater, we would like to send through the sewer system to the St. Albans City Municipal Wastewater Treatment Plant. And that's the nature of our discussion tonight. We'd like a permit to be able to send up to 50,000 gallons a day of treated wastewater to the Municipal Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just to flesh it out a little bit further, so we've had a collaborative team with Fitch and his folks and the city's consulting engineers trying to figure out exactly how to price this because it's a different type of discharge. Most of our programs are oriented around domestic discharges, and we've finally worked that out over many months. So what's in your packet is a series of, staff are recommending the granting of the allocation, and there's a series of conditions which we've negotiated with Eric. So we recommend granting the allocation consistent with the following conditions: payment of all allocation fees upfront or delayed with interest under the ordinance, 6% a year, annual supplemental payment of $15,000 for additional phosphorus loading, and that is subject to an annual percentage increase commensurate with the wastewater budget. So if the wastewater rates go up by 2%, then there'd be a 2% increase to that surcharge of 15,000, phosphorus limit of 7.5 pounds per day, and payment of annual affiliation fees based on the assessed value, and any other requirements of the city ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion with those conditions?
I know very little about this, but I, but I have staff recommended, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Nothing from outside?
Oh, any people in the public? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to let you know, Tim would have done that two or three minutes sooner than you did.
Talk about, talk about sludge.
That's the two or three minutes it took him to recuse himself.
Thanks for the support, Tim.
Okay. Fitch, thanks for joining us, making the trip up. Appreciate that. We're going to move on to the next consideration of extraterritorial water and wastewater allocation. And this is for Rocky Ridge Construction LLC. Is that you, Peter? Are you, no?
Yeah, I don't think anybody's here to speak to it. It's a more traditional water and wastewater allocation request. There's staff recommended, and there aren't any exceptional conditions.
Okay, entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Chad, second by Jim. Any further discussion? I was just trying to, by the map, just where exactly is this located? It's off Lower Well then, but...
I didn't do a site, didn't I?
Lower Newland, excuse me, sorry. Do you know where it is, Tim?
It's down below the, the city garage down there.
It's below the state garage.
State garage, yeah.
Solar panels they just installed. Key Yango did a development
Oh, yeah.
three or four years ago. It's just beyond that, so.
And there's a road going in now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. So we're going to move on. What's that?
See how that works?
Going on at item number seven, consider authorization to proceed with pool construction at, project at Hardak. That's what you're here for, Peter.
Good evening.
I didn't read down, I didn't read down, pardon me.
Yeah. Could, could have been out on the boat, yeah.
Sandy Beach is?
I don't go there.
Okay.
Too busy.
I was going to say, not, not anymore, it won't be. Okay, let's turn it over to Dom.
Yeah, Peter and I have been working as a, a tag team on this, and Peter's been doing a deeper dive on it. But we had some real sticker shock when bids came in, due largely to COVID. You know, we were, the original bids, difference between the estimate was in round numbers, 500,000. And Peter and his team's gone to work in trying to figure out how to get that under control, bring us back down within striking distance of our voter-approved items, which is, you know, 4.75 for the pool. So there's been a number of value engineering and smaller adjustments along the way, many of which are, are continuing. But one of the ways that we got there was we took out the demo of the existing pool, current pool, from the Hardak project. And we think there's some more work to be done and just... What's that noise? Talking with the, the pool, the school about what, if any, of the existing building they would like to reuse. We think we can self-perform some of the site work using public works. And all of that will be dealt with under this proposal under the FY22, excuse me, FY23 budget. Likely if, if there's, with some short-term borrowing or internal borrowing as part of it. We also reduced the performance bond requirements, and what we will do instead is we'll have monthly lien releases, which minimizes our exposure through that to just about a month's worth of work. We're down, we've got it down to 200 grand. That includes a hundred grand contingency. So we're still carrying about 100,000 that we're continuing to work towards. There's a call coming up to deal with some HVAC issues, which presents the greatest opportunity, I think, for some, some value engineering. In all instances, the 250,000 for Houghton Park has been protected. We haven't, haven't looked to dip into any of that. But we're up against a threshold of we really need to start this project this month, or it's not going to be ready for next year. And that's the, the question that's, that we're asking for tonight, is the motion authorized to succeed. But before we discuss that, Peter, details you would flesh out or things you would identify for him?
Just to put it maybe in perspective, I know a half a million dollars is a lot of money, don't get me wrong, it certainly is, but it's about 10% of the project cost. And I feel that the construction team has done a good job keeping it to that level, considering what's going on in the marketplace. It's just like the Wild West out there. The subs cannot get help, therefore they don't bid jobs because they don't have the help to do the jobs. The supply chain is in complete disarray, and you cannot get many materials when you need them anymore, like you used to be able to. And those materials, when you do get them, have gone up in cost. I mean, you all have heard the, the word about the lumber prices. What also impacts copper, most metals. It's, it's just crazy. We, I had a recent project that's gone to construction that we had to redesign the roof steel because the bar joists that we had designed originally are six months out. And normally they're three months. So we had to redesign. And, and it's, it's just crazy out there. It's an unfortunate time for the pool project, but we do need to, to get it built. And I think getting that $500,000 overrun down to 100,000 to 200,000 is, is a big, it shows a big effort on the construction team's part. it shows a big effort on the construction team's part. And we're not done. As Dom alluded to, we, we believe there's money to be saved in the HVAC system. Uh, we're considering abandoning the engineer's design and going with a design-build by an HVAC company that's been invested in this project since, since day one, thanks to our construction manager, P C M. They've got a very good relationship. So we're hoping that we're gonna save a good share of 100,000 dollars in that effort, but we don't have those numbers yet. Uh, we're also looking at some architectural value engineering items and that's, that's a call that we're having, I think it's tomorrow morning. Last Gengis is the architect, he's gonna be on there and we're gonna talk about some changes that might save money, uh, on his part of the design. So I think we're gonna get pretty darn close to the 4.75 million that the voters approved. I can't guarantee we're gonna get all the way there, but we're working hard to, to get as close as we can.
Peter, all permits are in place?
Not completely. We're waiting for fire prevention. I don't know, I, I'm having trouble finding out if it's even been issued yet. They've had it two months, they normally take a month. Because they haven't been very responsive to my calls and I've found out that they often send the permits out and don't let me know and they don't copy me. So we're searching City Hall to see if it might be here. But I'm still continuing to call them every day and hope one of these days they'll see fit to call me back. The Act 250 permit amendment, keep in mind, we had an Act 250 permit last year. We amended it to delete the new driveway and to relocate the recreation path. Uh, so that amendment has not been issued, um, but we have permission to start construction from Act 250 as long as we don't work on those two items. The cutoff date for requesting a hearing is July 22nd. So if no one requests a hearing, and there's no reason to think anybody would because there's been absolutely no opposition, um, I would expect a permit by August 1st to allow the full project to, to begin. But we haven't, we have permission to start the pool, the excavation for the pool, which is what we really need to get started because SSG Pools has to come in in August in order to be ready for next, next June. They have, they have to get in in August, so that's what's driving.
May 15th, just for the minute.
May 15th? Excuse me. But they have to get in, in August to make the schedule work. So that's why we're, we're anxious to get moving. That, and the town of St. Albans building permit has been applied for and they're working on it and I expect to see that this week.
Any questions for Peter or Dom?
Dom, where do we come, if we're 100,000 short, where does that come from? Lot.
It depends on the context of the rest of the budget, right? So, um, it could come from other non-property tax revenue sources flowing into the general fund, fee-for-service projects. It could come, um, from short-term debt serviced by the LOT proceeds. It could come from previous year's surpluses. It could come from, um, ARPA funds, potentially.
So we have some options.
You know, we got, we got a lot of options, just to, you know, um, we got a lot of time between now and then to figure out how we're gonna adjust. And, and we've got a number of adjustment tools.
When we're talking about materials, um, how about the dome?
The dome is under contract. That's, um, so we've locked that priced in.
So some of the, some of the reductions, Peter, where, where had they come? Where have the savings been made? In the building, in the, in the pool, in the landscape, what, what, what are they?
We haven't, we haven't modified the pool whatsoever. Nor have we modified the dome. The building has shrunk from last year's building when we had the joint bond vote with city and town. So the building has, has been reduced in size and there's been savings there. We save money by not building the new driveway in from Congress Street and in lieu of that, we're choosing to reconstruct the existing driveway where it meets Congress Street to give more site, uh, more stopping site distance between the new driveway and Fisher Pond Road. So there was a significant savings there and because we didn't have the new driveway going through the middle of the field, we moved the recreation path closer to Eastview along their boundary and that shortened up the sidewalk on Congress Street. So there was about a $20,000 savings there. And then in this, this round of pricing, Dom mentioned the, uh, taking out the demolition of the existing pool and the bond. And we also have, uh, locked in a framing contractor, at least we're, we're about to lock in a framing contractor, which is Jim Cameron, who is a strong supporter of the city and he's, uh, got a better price than the other framing bids that we had. Plus he is willing to, um, give us any savings in the, in the lumber materials if they, if the prices drop between today and when we actually buy the lumber, because the prices of lumber are headed downward. We don't know, you know, we're gonna probably need to buy lumber in late, late August, early September, and if the prices drop between now and then, he's gonna give us the benefit of that savings. We don't, we haven't been able to quantify it, obviously, but it's, it's, hopefully will be something. We've also gone out for additional bids on the concrete. And, uh, we are planning now to change the concrete supplier from whom we previously planned on using to, uh, another supplier who is a few thousand dollars less. So there's some small savings there.
A lot of fit and finish, tuck, stack in the pool house, you know, looking at the treatment for the floor and.
That's right, yeah.
Doors and windows and.
Instead of a polished concrete floor, we're going with an epoxy floor, which we think will, it, it saves $10,000 and it's actually probably better in a pool condition than a polished concrete floor, which can be slippery. Uh, so there's a, there's a lot of little things that we've been looking at and we're still looking. We're, we're gonna spend the next two to three weeks trying to refine the number.
And when the audience have questions? Seeing none, entertain a motion to, um, authorize to proceed. Motion by Jim, second by Chad. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes to proceed.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Peter. Thanks for coming in. Moving on to item number eight, which is, uh, the ability to designate Tom Lights as the authorized representative for the U.S. Department Treasury Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Bonds or Funds. Is Tom with us?
Tom, Tom's got a family dinner tonight, so I'm, I'm tea-lighting, so look for a motion as presented.
Chad made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Marie. Any questions for Dom or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. I got two ayes so far. Three ayes? Any more? Four, five? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to, uh, item number nine. Consider approval of loan agreement from the state revolving loan fund. Once again, that's under Tom, but Tom is absent, so Dom.
This loan agreement converts a loan to a grant. Look for a motion to approve.
How much is this?
Forty.
Forty thousand?
Seven hundred. Forty thousand seven.
Uh, motion by Chad, is there a second? Second by Jim. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposition? I'll, I'll oppose it. We, we hate to get free money. No, uh, motion passes, unanimous. Moving on to council reports, um, well, we start on this side with James. Do you have anything to share?
Just one thing, um, and I don't know, but I just noticed that we, we used to have signs in the city at certain intersections about, call it like compact cars only, things like that, because, um, the parking spot at the top of Hoyt, um, to the right is, um, there's a, there's often like extra long bed trucks that, that park there is very difficult to see end to end to get around it. It really would, and I don't want to eliminate where parking is, but we need parking, but we could have something to limit the size of the vehicle that parks in that spot. I think it would be a lot easier for all of us to, uh, get off that street.
I'll make the motion as a right-hand turn only at the top of Hoyt. I'll fix it.
Yeah. A lot of people would object to that, but the almost traffic coming always.
I think you make a good point, Jim. I, I've struggled with that corner myself, so.
It's the, uh, it's one of the constituents that really raised it to me is one of Mary's who says, I have to really break that up. So you could, you could take it up with her, Chad.
Chip, is that yours or Marty's?
It's a little bit of both, actually.
A little bit of both.
We can get after that.
So the first spot on Main to the south of Hoyt.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Turn out on my side.
Yeah.
Right in front of the, uh, where you stood, the, uh, whoever's in that, only nine.
Insurance. Insurance agent here.
The next question is what, what's considered a compact car? Cause we see that in the garage all the time. You have the compact size.
There's actually a definition.
Yeah. There's something we've been following, I forget about it. Small.
Small.
It's one of those subjective things.
Okay, anything else, Jim? Marie, what's going on in Alamo?
Alamo's beautiful. Quiet. Nothing really for me, just a comment, it's nice to see the Maple Fields building going up quickly and it's looking good and I think that's gonna be a nice addition to Lake Street there. And also glad to see that they're fixing finally the siding on the, on the hotel. That's.
Did they start on that? I saw the scaffolding out.
Yeah, they've got all the, they've got most of it ripped off.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, so. But other than that, uh, things are pretty quiet, so to speak.
I just wanna thank Marty for, uh, Lower Newton Railroad tracks. I don't know what he did. They are gonna get fixed. So I don't know, I don't know if he slipped some money under the table or something, but.
He's paying for it.
North Elm was 20 years in the making. I don't know if they ever fixed all this. I think you guys just kinda went in and did it.
Worked with them to do it.
Yeah, so they're super fast once we get a hold of one on Lower Newton.
All this is done, it's screwed.
Wow.
It's an improvement over a lot of.
It's not, it's not like North Elm.
But you, it hasn't been done yet, right? It's scheduled for the 20th?
The 20th, right.
Much appreciated.
Chad's a happy man. Happy, happy award person. Anything else, Ken?
No, that's it, thank you.
Bob?
Pretty quiet in Ward Five. I noticed the Public Works has been, uh, working on that corner down at Ferris Street and Lincoln Avenue to make it, I guess that's for the bus purposes, so that's a good improvement.
Actually, yeah, that's part of BFA's project. And, uh, that's their contractor and they're doing that.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
And anyway, it's a good improvement and that's about all I have from Ward Five at this point.
Mr. Hawkins?
Got a couple. First is, uh, I know it's getting lighter later, it's, now it's turning the other way, but anyway, uh, it's still dark in the south half of the, um, shopping center. So if someone can contact our person there, that would help. Notice a dangerous situation on Hudson, Hudson Street. I go down that street every morning.
People right there in the corner of the building, right?
Yeah. And there, I know there's, people like to sit outside and there's nowhere for these people to sit outside and they're sitting down right in the road. And they've got their dogs right there, yeah. And I, I hate to bring it up because I, I, I know they enjoy being, being out there, but my God, that is dangerous. Very dangerous. It's the, you know, we're Backstreet Boroughs, right? And then the little shot before that. And then the building that's on the corner of, of Main and Hudson, the people that live in the apartment.
It's the backside of that building.
Using the steps as their place to congregate in the morning, which is okay, but they've got their dog out, I know, I know, but there's, they've got lawn chairs out there and everything else and they're in the street.
I haven't seen a dog really out there, but they've got lawn chairs out there.
If there's anything that we can do to help that situation out, I don't know what it is we can, but it's very, very dangerous. And with Kingman, with, uh, not being able to go down Kingman, a lot of people are using Hudson Street to go down onto Federal Street. I have on several occasions, uh, in the last, uh, two months been using the parking garage. I've heard a lot of people thankful that they're getting those couple of hours free. One of the things that I have been disappointed with are the amount of kids that are fooling around in the elevator and on the stairs there with bicycles. I actually saw, um, one young man, uh, beating shoes up against the elevator door as his girlfriend was inside. I went in and said something, wasn't my place to do it. Uh, but it's almost routine now that I see kids going up and down those stairs with bikes, roller, uh, uh, skateboards, fooling around with the doors and the elevator and that's not the purpose of that thing. I don't know if the camera needs to be repositioned or what, but we need to take, keep a little more track of that. And that's not just once in a while, it's all the time, all the time.
Kinda just dovetailing that. So I've, I've received complaints for those in the Champlain Housing, uh, even at night, 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night, there's kids riding, kids or others on the fourth floor, hanging out, bikes coming and going, scooters coming and going, they skateboard, so, um, I was gonna share that as well, but there's, um, it might make sense to have, um, and I think PD does go up and down, but maybe not enough and, uh, later in the nighttime might be worthwhile.
Yeah, okay.
It's almost like a playground for, for the kids, so. Amtrak is getting a little bit of revitalization and I just happened to go down there. I was talking to John at Boston Taylor the other day and I went down behind there. Uh, I haven't been there for a while, um, and it's getting pretty dumpy looking. You know, we've got a nice system there and it's just, uh, someone should go down there and take a look at it.
Stationed, the building?
Yeah, nah, the area around it, uh, you know, it's, uh, tires, junk, cars.
Trees growing up. Is it Amtrak property?
No. That's all I'll say about that. And then, uh, the other thing is, uh, I, and the downtown's looking so nice. I hope we're, we as a city are not gonna forget about Hudson and Center Streets. I hope we're gonna do something. It doesn't have to be a complete, what we're doing on, uh, Kingman Street, but a little bit of a rehab for those two streets as well, their core streets in the city, uh, as well, if people utilize them.
Just put a new sidewalk and curb in.
Yeah. Are we gonna pave the streets or something like that? Because that'll really make it look nice with all the streets in a line looking, uh, all kind of giving a nice, uh, upgrade and I, I just hope we don't forget about those two streets.
Not a lot we can do on Hudson, uh, the, maybe from the, from the theater down, but not up, but.
Yeah, that's a, that's a tough street, um, but Center Street is, you know, they're, trying to do some business on that street. And I, I just hope that we can continue on with what we're doing downtown and spend a little bit of effort there. Doesn't have to be anything great, but just boost that up a little bit. And that's all I have, other than the fact that I do agree with Josh who's left about the noise. I live on Brainerd Street and my office is on Stevan Street and it's all been on at my office going up and down that street. I can hear it all the time. But, um, Brainerd Street, which is a, a, a heavy-traveled street, uh, for people to get from one part of the city down into that corridor of Main Street, uh, it's pretty dangerous. These little small cars are, are, are making a lot of noise and they're driving pretty fast, but that's all I have to say.
We gotta backtrack and go to Chad for one more.
So maybe, um, on like the side of the theater, maybe those windows that are boarded up for like a painting or something. Open, have open doors or something. I just wanna thank Marty's crew. I left for work at four o'clock this morning and they were out striping. So they've been doing that at night, I think that's been really all full of traffic.
That works too. A hundred percent that works.
They've been coming in, half the crews been coming in in Chumba.
Yeah. So they were, they were working that Lower Weldon, Upper Weldon corner this morning. That's so much better than trying to do that during the day. Probably a lot safer for them.
Yeah, a lot safer for them, I think. I think a lot safer.
Yeah.
And you know, and they, I guess they dry a little bit before cars start, you know, making that, uh, ghost white paint, you know, as they, as they try to get the cars on the other sides, they can paint the other half.
More efficient.
Yeah, please thank the crew.
I had a couple of things, uh, Main Street Car Show or Kingman Car Classic, uh, is this Saturday, be held on, um, Main Street. Marty, I've, as a team, discussed logistics and all that and.
Paul had sent out an email earlier and.
Paul had sent out an email earlier and we've got all the barricade signs and everything. We should be ready to go for Friday.
Okay. Do you, do you know if the organizer has touched base with the farmer's market? Are they, I think that-
I don't know. I, I had an email with the farmer's market manager. He said that we're talking to Kathy.
Okay, good. Okay, thanks, Chip. Going back to Amtrak, Amtrak, there's a kickoff Monday morning at nine, eight thirty-nine?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty. Does anyone who's interested, who wants to take a ride on the Amtrak, they're charging a dollar.
Where are we going?
You're headed south to ultimately Beddington or Rattleboro. Depending how long you want to stay in a community, you can get a ride back for a dollar, but you may want to try to find a transportation home. But anyone, families who might be interested can jump on board for a dollar and head down, head Essex, where are the stops? Essex, Montpelier, Springfield, I think, and Beddington or Rattleboro. Probably Rattleboro.
Anyone who wants a ride back, we'll give them a ride back.
There you go.
Five hundred bucks.
Chad will give you a ride back. So that's this coming Monday at eight thirty in the morning. Lieutenant Governor will be here. Supposedly the mayor is supposed to say a few words. Whether he shows up or not, we don't know. And so there'll be, there'll be a kickoff. Chip, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, I'm going to try and do some nice refreshments there. I think Congressman Welch will also be there.
At the site here?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. Get someone down there. We've got to get someone down there, Marty. The place is-
We can, but the property you're talking about is a private property.
Yeah, I know it is.
We're gonna, Tim, we're gonna have sort of the cameras pointing the other direction for the ceremony and we'll-
I'll, I'll, I'll call him in.
I was going to say, Marty, can you touch base with your crossing contact and?
We are getting some bonding and stuff to make the stage look nice and a nice backdrop.
Dave Blodgett might be one that we can talk to as well. The other thing, Chip and Marty, any movement on the signs that we talked about two months ago for Bank Street?
They haven't, they haven't come in yet. Same thing Peter was talking about, the aluminum right now.
Good. The other thing is just to pitch what Zach shared with us, a community event in the park on Friday night, starting at six, Zach, starting at six. And the last thing I had was Dave Southwick sent out a email looking for interested parties to host a tree in the greenbelt, anyplace throughout the city. So we have to plant, I think we'll be planting-
In the fall.
Fall, in the fall, probably fifty trees, is it, Chip?
I think that would be about normal.
Yep. So we'll be replacing some that we've lost over the last year or two. So if you know a constituent who's looking for a tree in the greenbelt, let Dave know and we'll get it planted this fall. So.
Can I say one more thing?
Chad did, so you can, yeah.
I just wanted to, in case anyone wasn't aware, of Marla's one, who used to be, worked on Alamo Percy, possibly took, uh, life last week. And she was quite an individual favorite. She was, she was a servant in the Navy. She was a Native American. And she was working on other persons. So I think we should acknowledge the fact that she served the city well and she was here.
We send flowers, huh?
Yeah.
So the city sends flowers to the funeral home. Thank you for reminding me of that, Jim. I would also add that Marla, Marla said she oversaw the Memorial Day and Veterans Day ceremonies in Taylor Park on a regular basis. And, you know, it was sad that she passed unexpectedly, so.
A lot of you probably remember Marty, not Marla's, but you know, she's still named Marty.
Yep.
By the same token, of course, Ernie Farrar passed away. He was a longtime-
Yeah.
St. Almond City resident. I don't know where he lived at the time of his passing, but-
Federal Street.
For these years, he lived on Federal Street and he was obviously-
Still lived on Federal Street?
They still, Federal Street. Yeah, yeah.
So yes, lost two, two wonderful people for sure. So. Anyone, last comments for any person? What's that?
Showers on Saturday.
Oh, so showers on Saturday could, car show could be moved to Sunday, I think, is the, Marty's, the rain date was Sunday. Okay, let's move on. Is there any other business, Dom?
Nope.
Uh, consider approval of warrants, six thirty twenty-one.
Motion approval warrant, six thirty twenty-one.
Sorry.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Jim. Any comments, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Warrants pass.
Motion approved minutes, six fourteen twenty-one.
Abstain.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from six fourteen with Marie abstaining. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any changes or corrections? Hearing none, motion passes. Item number fourteen was executive session that we do not need. We will not be going into executive session. So I would entertain, let me just first point out that we were scheduled to go to seven forty.
Keep talking.
So I'm five minutes ahead if I get a motion to adjourn pretty soon. So motion by Chad, do you adjourn? Seconded by Jim. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you all. Thank you constituents for showing and Fitch making the trip. Chip, thanks for coming. Thank you all and hope you have a nice evening.